In particular, we now have about forty-five minutes in the morning. Or from eight-thirty to nine-ten, so forty minutes in the morning. Where we have students arriving before we as a group get to having all of our kids in the same place and for instruction to begin. And at the end of the day, because we have the two bus system, where we have half of our buses go to the intermediate school, half to the elementary, and then they switch. The end of the school day, at least three o'clock to three forty-five. In some cases, it starts earlier with packing up at two forty-five. So that's about an hour at the end of the day, certainly forty-five minutes at the end of the day, where we don't have all our kids. There's a lot of opportunity lost there. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to shorten that amount of time, give our staff more time with our kids where we can be productive. I mentioned improving efficiency of transportation. One of the things I talked about with the Capitol project is that by enlarging the lot out behind the elementary school, our hope was that instead of having half the buses come and then a second half come and wait for that transition between the buildings, we could bring all the buses at one time. And I'll go through a schedule here in a minute that'll demonstrate that. I've also mentioned the safety concerns at the elementary school. I've been banged on certainly since I've had the job from the village about the congestion on Main Street for the folks that are here that might be involved in that. It can be a little problematic. We have a guard at the crosswalk that has a full-time job and then some. As a matter of fact, I've had calls this year alone from Chief Pittman saying that we've we've almost had some people hit because people aren't abiding by that. So to try to alleviate that, get the parents, get the students off of Main Street, and I'll talk about at the elementary school in particular. But our parents then for walkers or for those that are going to be picked up are now going to be allowed to come into Park Center Central Park Place and go all the way to the back of the building where we'll be releasing students from. Then the last thing is, as you know, we struggled with our late bus system this last year and even the year before with a shortage of drivers. There were a number of days when we had to cancel after-school activities because we didn't have enough drivers. By going to this one release system, the late bus as we know it goes away, but we moved the opportunity for students to be in school longer and for the buildings then to look at the time that they have the students in the building and to determine how is it that we're going to meet the needs of all the kids, whether it be clubs or activities throughout the course of that day. And it gives the families a consistent time. They know every day that their child is going to be finished at this time. It's not going to be, well, I thought they were staying till the end of tenth period, but now that we don't have buses, they can't. So those really are the whys. So let's get into some of the some of the details. So I sent the parent square out on May fourteenth, and this was the information I shared. And what I had said in the email or in the parent square was that as we move forward and as I got some questions, we would provide more information. I had a couple of people, two, I think, one or two folks reached out to me after that initial. And I was I talked to them about some of the questions they had. And as we get into the summer, we'll be sharing more specific information from the buildings. But this is what I sent out on May fourteenth. So in grade six through twelve, our junior high will start at seven forty-five, our senior high at eight o'clock. Seven twenty-five, the buses will begin dropping off at the junior high, seven thirty-five at the senior high. Not large, a large change from in the past. At pre-K to five, typically our buses drop off right now at eight thirty. They'll go to eight forty-five as well as the intermediate school. And the reason that there's no stagger there is because the same buses that are dropping off and picking up our elementary and intermediate school students are doing it at the junior high too. So once they finish that run, they go back out. So our times are tentative, but they'll fall in that eight forty-five to nine o'clock range. For dismissal times, this is the information. We've added to a little bit of the information since my parent square in talking with Doug Pascarella and Aaron Hamas at the elementary school. On grade six through twelve, our junior high would dismiss at two thirty-five. That's about eighteen minutes later than it was when we had a nine or a tenth period day there. We just moved the ninth period. We've extended that instructional time. So they'll be released at two thirty-five, the high school at two forty-five. At pre-K through five, the pre-K walkers will leave at three twenty-five. The K-two walkers will leave ten minutes later at three thirty-five. And again, that's with the parents being able to come in and have their students come out the back of the building, go to the cars, load the cars. And we're going to help with traffic flow by having the crossing guard in where they are now. But then more importantly, we're going to have staff at the Kiuga Street exit, Clinton Street exit, Kiuga Street exit, stopping traffic so that cars can leave. Because if we don't, it's going to be, it'll be congested anyway. But we think with some tweaking that we can, we can make it happen. So our pre-K walkers at three twenty-five, our K-two walkers at three thirty-five. The plan is that while the intermediate school bussers are being loaded, all of the eighteen buses are being loaded at the intermediate school. That's when the elementary walkers are leaving. And by three fifty, our buses drive over. All of the cars from all of the walkers are gone. And all of the buses roll into Central Park Place and that back parking lot. And then all of our bussers come out, get on the buses and leave. So there's not going to be two dismissals anymore. So I did a comparison of the elementary just to kind of show. So currently, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, our parent drop-off now is eight thirty to whenever the last parent drops off, but about twenty minutes, eight thirty to eight fifty or so. And our buses drop off pretty much that same time, eight thirty to eight fifty-five. In twenty-four, twenty-five, by flexing some staff at the beginning of the day, parents can still drop off their kids at eight thirty. We would ask that they go eat breakfast when they come in though, because that's where our staff are going to be. So a parent can still drop off from eight thirty to eight forty-five. The buses won't start dropping off till eight forty-five. And that'll be, so everybody will be in the building by nine o'clock. So there was some concern, and I think some of the inaccurate information going around, is that we were, we're not allowing folks to drop kids off till later, which could put a burden on some families for childcare. By simply flexing some staff, it's not going to be that issue. So I'm happy to think that we could accommodate that. In the afternoon, this is our current setup, as I mentioned earlier. I bunched our walkers and bussers together. But about from three o'clock to three forty-five, that's forty-five minutes where kids are going. But not all of them, some of them. You know, our walkers will leave early first, and then our pre-K walkers will leave first. And then our K-two walkers will leave next about five, ten minutes later. And then the buses will start coming about three twenty. And then our second bus run will come about three thirty, three forty, right? So that's forty-five minute duration that we have currently. A lot of missed opportunities there. What is being laid out for next school year is our pre-K walkers leave at three twenty-five, as I mentioned earlier, and the last bus leaves at three fifty-five from the parking lot. So we've taken the forty-five minutes and shortened it to at least thirty minutes. So that's fifteen minutes a day they can pick up. In addition to whatever the building decides to do on the front end with the schedule. Fifteen minutes over the course of a hundred-and-eighty-day schedule is a lot. And so that's, that's what we're proposing here for the elementary school. One of the things that was a question when I talked to two staff members yesterday, it seemed like they felt as if we were just singling out the elementary school. And I, hopefully I made the point to them that that's not the case. When I met with each building principal to look at this concept this spring, I challenged each of them to increase the amount of instructional time in their building because they're going to have their kids longer. The one that is being discussed here more in detail tonight is because of that's where the questions have come from. But when we start sending out information, we'll send out information about every building and some of the changes that'll happen. But you can see from this, it's really ten, fifteen minutes tops at the end of the day. The morning will look the same in terms of parents. We can't, I'd love to be able to get parents into the lot in the morning, but we're not going to be able to do that because our buses are coming in at all different times. At the end of the day, it's easier for us to, to. So I've thrown a lot at you. Let me just conclude by saying we'll be sharing more building-specific information as we move through the summer. The kind of the mindset is, was get it out early, deal with any questions that come, formulate frequently asked questions, and then start giving more building-specific things after we graduate students this Saturday. But I've escalated, or I've sped that up a little bit because we've, you know, got some questions about it. And I figured I'd have some folks here that I could help provide some information for tonight. Questions for me?
I do, I do feel like that does provide some clarifying points, especially if the drop-off were the elementary to note that. I know that's the biggest question mark, I think, was the biggest change of, I know it's only fifteen minutes, but that makes a huge, that makes a huge difference.
When you start your day, it sure does, yeah.
And I mean, I know one of the biggest concerns is parents are definitely very concerned about their littlest ones being, you know, getting on the bus at three fifty-five, having their day already extended. I know it's only fifteen, I mean, I know logistically it looks correct, but I mean, you also know if you've got elementary students that are being stretched at that point of the day, then they're on the bus, like what are we looking at timeframe-wise for kids getting home? Are we looking at post-five o'clock? Because I know that's one thing, like one speculation that people are going around. They're like, so I'm not going to get my kid home until five o'clock? Which is a, which is absolutely a reasonable concern. And I mean, I definitely feel like this would have been a better, that was very clear, providing way more information for parents. But I do know there is concern toward the end of that day with that. And so it, I mean, that would definitely be definitely very important as you're moving forward, whatever information you can provide with that because, you know.
Yeah. Well, as we get into the summer, they'll start putting those bus routes together, and we'll have to look at those. But the intention, at least in talking to the transportation department when we were planning this, is other than the fact that the kids are leaving about ten, you know, maybe fifteen minutes later, they don't anticipate bus runs running any longer. If anything, they can be more efficient because they've got all the buses going at the same time. So they, when they build the routes, they obviously are going to take that into account to try to minimize an extension of somebody's day getting home from when. Just because you leave ten or fifteen minutes later from the building doesn't guarantee, right? That you're going to get home ten or fifteen minutes later? Because now we have all eighteen buses we can schedule at the same time.
Yeah. And have we looked at logistically, can we fit all?
Yeah, we've actually rolled them all in there.
And it's like, even if it's like, hey, one car happens to sneak. Like, have we looked at like all those logistics? I mean, I understand, I mean, like, I mean, I've been there on day one, and I know even just loading up half the bussers of people on those buses.
Well, yeah, please don't, please don't take, anybody take this as this is going to be easy or perfect from day one. Because nothing ever is, like you said, John. We've been doing it the other way for years, and it's never perfect. But we can certainly get all of the eighteen buses in. We've done it in both places. We had Jen roll the buses over there. And they even looked at, like, how do we, you know, coitoer the buses so that it's safe for kids to get on them and you're not walking in between buses and everything? So, so yeah, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have done this if the transportation department said, we can't do it. We would have been crazy to try to get it done. But they're giving us the impression that this is something that they can do. They're confident in that. And so, you know, and what I said again to the two staff members yesterday is you put a plan in place, you think about those things that you should think about as you put it together, and then you evaluate it as it goes. Even if this three twenty-five doesn't work, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater and go back to what you had before because then we've got, we're right back to where we were with the concerns out on Main Street again. You tweak it a little bit. But even, you know, again, in the first couple of days, not a good year. We're trying to maneuver some things around and shifting some things. And so we'll continue to do that. Our transportation department's really good at that.
You mentioned that you're hearing these concerns. Are you passing them on or are you just?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mentioned it right to, I mean, I sent an email right out to Tom right away, asking him, and just the last few weeks I've been here, I mean, I've been listening, hearing people discuss and definitely have asked them, hey, have you reached out?
Yeah, I have had two. I did have two people reach out. But what I hope tonight, I put, that's where I put at the end there, you know, we've got folks here that are going to share their thinking and their questions. We'll gather all those and we'll conclude that and the information that goes out to parents.
I absolutely definitely think that feedback in that manner is going to be extremely helpful as you look to refine this process. Because I, I mean, there's good aspects to it, but I also feel like there's a lot of, it's got to work or there could be some.
Absolutely.
I did see at the beginning of the elementary day that you did, you had the fifteen minutes set up there. Was it the nine, eight forty-five to nine? Is that set up for kids when they arrive, that they can go eat breakfast and?
From the time they hit the door, and then again, the master schedule will give them that length of time. But yes, kids will come in, get off the bus. Doug has talked a little bit about, he's not far enough in his thinking yet to finalize it. But, you know, perhaps some group of students, when they get off the bus, go to their classroom first while others go right to the cafeteria, and then they fly out to try to, to better organize. But those are things that, I'm not going to try to micromanage that. They put together some good ideas without me getting involved and getting in their way. So I would anticipate that they'll continue to look at that.
I just have one, not so much a question, but the, I think it was on the last one, the walker pickup for the elementary school and then the junior high. I think it was only a five-minute difference. So I just.
When, where, oh, you're looking?
Between, yeah.
Right there?
Yeah, so it's like, yeah, three thirty-five for K-through-two walkers and then three forty at the intermediate walkers. Five minutes might not be a lot of time with that traffic to get from the elementary to the intermediate.
And the nice, and the nice thing is, we do have some movement there. Because there's no reason that if we feel like that's a problem, that the walkers couldn't go to three forty-five.
Okay.
Right? That, that's easier to tweak because there won't be any buses there anymore. They'll already be gone and you can, you know, instead of having them all come out at the same time. I did that because that's what folks in the building said they could do. And that they didn't think it would cause a problem. But like I said, we'll look at it and if we need to make some sort of changes to it, we'll.
What's the timeframe that the staff is contractually obligated to be at the building?
So I don't have it on.
What are the buffers on that?
Yeah, so I don't have it on this document, but at the, and the only one I really remember is that the elementary school would go till four. The teaching staff would go to four.
Okay.
It's about five or ten minutes, depending on the building, after the kids leave. But I can remember the four o'clock.
And same on the front end of it?
What's that?
And same on the front end?
No, so at the elementary school, and we'll go back just again, that's the example. The, the teaching staff by contract start at eight forty-five. So that's why you need to flex people in the morning to be there at eight thirty for when to accept the kids if we're going to be allowing that the parents to drop them off. But again, I think it's important, and we'll communicate this when we talk to the families. But the expectation should be that if you're going to be dropping your child off at eight thirty, that we're going to be able to supervise the cafeteria. And we, that's great, we want more kids to eat, so that might encourage that. But that's where the kids will go, would be to the cafeteria, not to their classroom because they won't have teachers there unless, you know, you don't want to have a teacher that's, that's not contractually obligated to be in the classroom, have supervising duties. And the other thing I'd say too, is again, this hasn't, Doug and his group haven't formulated that because I haven't given them necessarily the go-ahead to do it yet. But they might come up with something different that flexes people so there are people in classrooms. I'm just saying, with the initial conversation, it's easier to gather people in one place than in many places. Any other questions here? And I'm anxious to hear what folks have to share with us. And again, what we'll do during that period is if you have some questions or thoughts, we'll gather those and then we'll, we'll take those forward, all right?
Yeah, we'll do community voices in section six of our agenda, so that'll be coming up.
Good.
Thank you. Brings us to new business. Warrant reports and claims auditor reports. I'll accept the motion to approve the warrant reports and claims auditor reports. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Treasurer's report. Motion to approve the treasurer's report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see. Our investment summary and our budget status report, revenue status report, those have been included for informational items. That brings us to the reports from the committee on preschool special education. I request a motion to approve the reports from the committee on preschool special education. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reports from the committee on special education. I'll ask for a motion to approve the reports from the committee on special education. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you, Mr. Moore. That brings us down to a donation. Motion to accept the following donations. Two hundred and fifty dollars from the Homer Vacational Foundation and a fifty-dollar donation from the Randall School Sunshine Fund. I'll request a motion for that. Questions, comments? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, brings us down to the disposal of items. Motion to approve the disposal of items from the food service department, junior high and high school. Questions?
What do you do with three hundred and five VHS tapes?
You know, I should have anticipated that question.
Watch a lot of TV?
I would say not much. I would, I would say not much. I would assume they're blank.
Who has a VCR?
I have one in an old TV. Some embarrassing videos.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. The communication services resolution. I'll accept a motion to approve the communication services resolution.
So move.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Bus lease resolution. I'll accept a motion to approve the bus lease revolu- revolution. Resolution.
That comes later.
Questions?
Seems to be in line with our budgeted amounts.
Yeah, under that, which is good news, yeah.
And what you might have mentioned to us, the second, second, it wasn't the best, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Glad we had a good one.
Yeah, it's the same company that we've been fortunate to be working with, so.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the end-of-year financial resolutions. Questions?
Keeps us in line with the four percent maximum unrestricted fund balance.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll undertake a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine strategic plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to slide personnel to the end for our executive session. Which brings us down to informational items.
Yes, we've got some fundraising updates for you, a couple of groups. Our DECA group will be doing a community request for donations. And the National Honor Society, well into their planning for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for the homecoming dance. Those are what we have tonight.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to our community voices section. And just to go over this real quick. Please note that personnel matter will not be discussed at any time during a public meeting. The public comment period is a time for community members to ask questions, present petitions, or make statements regarding either this evening's agenda or a particular issue or concern. The board will take such issues under advisement. A couple of the ground rules. If you wish to speak, place your name on the signing list, thank you. Prior to making your comments, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to two minutes or less per speaker. And no speaker may comment or identify any particular student or employee by name or situation in his or her comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designee. Handouts and/or petitions are to be given only to the district clerk for distribution to the board. The board will receive and reconsider all written comments. And keep in mind, we will listen, but we can't respond. Let's start with Jackie Mack.
I do have a few handouts.
Get ready to tell Jack.
Okay, thank you. And there I go. Wherever you're at, okay.
It's always awkward with people behind you, right?
Good evening, my name is Jackie Mack, and I come to speak tonight as a concerned parent of a fourth grader and a preschooler. I'm also a second-grade teacher in the district. I had discussions with fellow colleagues as well as parents. Majority had concerns and do not think this change is appropriate for young learners. People were thrown off guard and didn't expect this type of change without having a chance for any input. Many people are wondering why the changes were necessary and who was involved in the decision-making. There appears to be no clear thought-out plans for arrival and dismissal procedures, so what will that actually look like and are they feasible for elementary school? Was there any research done about what is best for different age groups? We did meet with the superintendent for answers but are still left with many questions even after these new changes seem to night. Research has shown younger children should start school earlier. These older children need more sleep and should start school later. I have provided you with a few articles regarding this. This new schedule seems to be pushing back our most valued morning instructional time and adding it on to the end of a long day. This is not as effective with young learners. They simply do not have the stamina to stay engaged and are exhausted by the end of the day already. The youngest learners will be dismissed last and get home very late. Family time is incredibly important and that barely leaves time to just be kid at home before they go to bed. Getting these children to after-school activities and sports will be difficult. We believe in nurturing a whole child, and it is sad that they will be missing out on a lot of cherished family time, playtime, and fun activities outside of school. Many caregivers work and are not able to wait longer to get their children to school. Before-school care may even be difficult to find and become a financial burden. Our school already has a difficult time finding substitutes, and someone mentioned they would not be taking jobs at the elementary building with this change. This change is showing some negative ripple effects that may not have been thought of previously. The schedule should not have been changed until there were answers for these questions to ensure it is feasible and realistic. These questions do deserve answers. I will provide the board with a list of questions before the next meeting. We strongly believe that if we came together as a group, we could collectively create a better plan and do what is best for all students at Homer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Jack. You also avoided that. I thought it didn't go off on your touch.
No, I know. I was like, oh, boy.
It would have been rude.
Hey, there was, no one said anything about a technology thing.
That's true. That's true.
Uh, Hannah Cochran.
My name is Hannah Cochran, I'm a parent of three children in the Homer School District. A Homer alum and a speech-language pathologist at the elementary school. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of families, staff, and community members that have questions and concerns regarding the schedule change. Homer Blue Pride, we know what we say yet, but with this change, a lot of us did not feel it. Partnerships is one of the key components of our pride vision, which states that it is to promote collaboration among staff, students, families, and community to support student learning. Homer Strategic Plan also emphasizes that belief that we value feedback from parents, staff, and students to enhance and open mutual communication. And we embrace communication and collaborative decision-making to foster stronger school community. With this change, many of us are not feeling a follow-through with these beliefs. To our knowledge, when this decision was made, there was little to no collaboration with any of these entities. Input from those directly involved could have helped with the decision and/or offered a different perspective to concerns and initiatives in the time change. A major concern is regarding ninth and tenth periods of junior high and high school. I have personally seen the direct positive impact of the availability of these periods with my own children. I'm curious what this will look like with the schedule change. Will there be a ninth or tenth period for extra help, clubs, or more? Many students benefit from that one-on-one time and/or small group setting to get the help they need and deserve. There are also concerns regarding coaching. Many of our staff double as Homer coaches. How will an elementary staff member be able to coach a modified or high school level sport while still being able to fill their contractual duties? When will practices and games begin due to this time change? Will there be buses to take our student athletes to these games? We keep saying it's only fifteen minutes, or fifteen minutes adds up, but I challenge you to think of what an extra fifteen minutes means to you and your family. Does it mean being able to get dinner on the table in order to run to the next sporting event, dance recital, or play practice? This only fifteen-minute change is sure to have an effect on the entire school that may not have been fully considered. While this change may end up working for the whole, it, which is a hope, I guess, if we cannot change it, the lack of communication and collaboration is a little concerning as a community.
Carrie?
Yeah. Carrie Schlinker? Did I write?
Yeah, Schlinker, yeah.
And I wanted to, I wanted to put that in.
My maiden name's even worse. So I'm Carrie Schlinker. I'm here on behalf of my going into kindergarten and my third grader. So I don't really have anything written up, just notes that I've been taking, which that was awesome. Very helpful for me to see the times have broken up. My main concern as a parent is the busing. Uh, my kid has already changed buses from the first year they were there and it's been extended out to eight o'clock. I work eight to four-thirty. That's an issue for me, I'm already late to work now. What time is the bus gonna pick up? Uh, my husband and I would like for the busing schedule to come up sooner than August so that we can plan on that, so we can plan on daycare. Uh, before-school is very hard to find, before-school care. Uh, after-school is much easier, so if you're changing the bus route and my kid's not getting picked up till eight fifteen, eight-thirty now, that's a problem for us, huge problem. Another concern is the lunches that you mentioned. Um, if my son's not getting off until nine o'clock, is he now, what time's he eating breakfast? And he's in kindergarten, so now he's gonna eat lunch an hour later? And now he's gonna go until four-thirty, five o'clock till he gets another meal? Like, that's a concern to me. I just wish that we could even send out something through Parents where asking for feedback on how everyone feels about this, how it would affect them, taking all those notes and just getting a better solution. Maybe somebody has better advice into how to schedule this. Uh, I don't think extending the school day is gonna help this. Uh, but my main concern is the busing schedule. Uh, right now, my son has an issue with bathroom behavior. And he already has to stop at the intermediate, have an eight-minute mark, go to the bathroom, or is being his hands on the bus because it's taking too long for him to get home. That's a huge concern to me, and he's being picked on by bus drivers, so I'm gonna wear a diaper. So I have a huge problem with the busing right now. And especially extending this, if they're gonna add more routes, that's a problem for me too. I'm looking out for my kids and I want them home, their extracurricular activities start at four o'clock, between four and four-thirty. I need them home so I can get them to their sports, to keep them active, to keep them engaged, and get them home to have dinner at a normal hour. So I would like to see a better solution to this, obviously something needs to be fixed. Um, otherwise we wouldn't be making this drastic change, but I think there should be a better solution and maybe involve more parties, like the, like a community of teachers, some community members. Um, and really get a better feedback on how we can work together as a whole to come up with a better solution. The busing situation just isn't working for me. Uh, just, all of this is just adding up and it's, I don't know how my husband and I are gonna find somebody to get the kids on the bus for us and get them off the bus. I mean, that's great, I don't need after-school care now, but now they're missing their, their activity and they're probably starving and my son is exhausted by three o'clock. But I do pick him up from school, he's exhausted and just wants a snack by then. So I just hope that you consider that and consider that as a whole and maybe talk to Jen Moore into getting that bus schedule out, regardless if you're changing times. Getting it out much sooner because the bus route is already made. Registration begins in the spring, there's no reason why you can't get that out much sooner for the parents to help them out.
Thank you. And Taylor?
Hi, I'm Taylor Jandrew and I'm with Portland RWC A. I do the before and after-school program at the elementary and the intermediate. I do really appreciate the powerpoint that was put together, however, I am very nervous about you saying that kids will now be allowed in the cafeteria from eight-thirty to eight-forty-five. Because, and now this will turn into like my licensed space until that time. So they won't be able to go into there until my kids are dismissed, so are the kids that are in my program now also getting dismissed at eight-thirty? If they're not, um, I don't know how, my, my biggest concern right now is going to be staffing. Um, and other than the other parents have said, or the teachers have said, that fifteen minutes, it doesn't seem like a lot. But I have SUNY Portland students that are ninety-five percent of my staffing. They have to drive from Homer to SUNY Portland by parking to get to their classes, which I already have, is ninety percent at nine AM. So we have that half hour that they're able to drive to school, get parts, get to class, and be good. Now they have fifteen minutes that they're like, yeah, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make that now because they got the certification during the school year. So that's another big concern, not only if that is, if they're getting dismissed at eight-thirty, that's one thing to the staff members, but if they're not, then I have that licensed space until eight-forty-five that no one else would be able to go into because it's the licensed space through CFS. So that's another thing that I think is put into thought about all then, put us into more of the conversation with everything as well. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that didn't have the opportunity to sign in? Okay. Thank you very much for your, your, uh, public comment and, uh, thank you very much. Brings us to Board Committee Reports.
Yes, uh, we have, uh, the Professional Learning Committee and the Instructional Leadership Group that have met since we met last, so I'll ask Mr. Ebner to update the board.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Turp. Uh, we met, uh, ILC met for the final time this year on June eleventh. We had a fairly robust agenda. Some procedural things we had to sort out, we had some issues this year with out-of-district conference requests. And when staff go out of district, it's quite a process as far as paperwork, getting successful, successful completion documents from some of these vendors and people that put on these conferences is difficult. We need that as part of paying the vendors toward the out-of-district conference request. So this summer, we're gonna rework kind of the, the paperwork process and kind of better advertise it. It's kind of hidden within our conference request system, it's not easily accessible by staff. Uh, some of the links are broken, we found as well, so that probably leads to some confusion about what documents are needed when, so we're gonna clean that up. Uh, we outlined next year's ILC meeting schedule. Uh, this year, we met six times, um, as an instructional leadership council. Previous years, it was anywhere between ten and twelve meetings. As we narrowed our fo- focus and scope over the last three years, um, the need to meet ten to twelve times simply is just not necessary. So we're gonna mimic the schedule we had this year with six meetings over the course of the ten months of the school year. Uh, right now, we are engaged, we have about ninety teachers coming in this summer, uh, for summer curriculum work. Uh, this year, we're on year three of our four-year cycle. Uh, we have, uh, science teachers, um, pre-K through twelve science teachers. We have art and music teachers as well, so those are the three big subject areas coming in. Um, we had two training sessions, um, yesterday morning and this morning, uh, for staff doing summer curriculum. We're gonna process the procedures of our curriculum development and using our curriculum template, uh, that we've adopted, uh, as a district, and how to, what the expectation is for the work that they're coming in to do. Couple of minor tweaks, um, regarding our compliance training and for those teachers in the crowd who love the compliance training, um, it's just a wonderful time. You learn so much about if it's wet and it's not yours, don't touch it, and the life lessons you learn through those. But we're gonna be moving to a different vendor, uh, Vector Solutions will be our new vendor. Most districts use Vector Solutions, we've historically used GCN, uh, Compliance Training Services. Uh, Vector is free, uh, through our relationships with our insurance carrier. So we'll move into that. Videos are very similar, the compliance training is very similar, um, but, uh, the free price tag and a lot of other districts use it, so, um, it's a good thing. And then lastly, we discussed, we're tweaking our mentoring program a little bit. We have had a great opportunity over the last three years, since I've been here, and I'm sure it started before that, I saw it in my last district as well. We were able, we're able to hire people with a depth of experience from other districts, and we're talking, you know, anywhere between ten and fifteen years of service to other districts and they're coming to Homer. Typically, what would happen is you would be assigned a mentor for two years and go through a two-year mentoring program here at the district. Uh, Jenny Guy is our mentoring coordinator, she does a fantastic job leading that. And her and I have been collaborating a little bit about differentiating for the staff that we're hiring. Does it make sense for someone thirteen years, fourteen years of experience in a previous district to go through the same mentoring program that we provide to new hires that we hire right out of college? They didn't have their master's degree yet. Um, we felt, no, we should differentiate for the staff we have. So, um, in collaboration with the principals and myself, um, our ment, our, our veteran staff, so if you earn tenure in another district before coming here, you can opt out of year two, as long as your principal agrees, and I agree. You have three options. One, you can, uh, host or, or put on a professional learning session on one of our staff development days. You can engage in a book study, uh, books approved by, um, of course, myself and Jenny Guy, they have to be related to your job. Um, and the third thing is to host a mentoring session, uh, during one of the men, monthly mentoring sessions. Uh, and the employee gets to choose which of those three options they want to do. So we feel, you know, we wanna, we wanna make sure that they have a nice soft landing into Homer, but again, we wanna value their expertise and not, not waste their time treating them like a brand-new staff member, uh, that was just hired from the college universe. So that was our ILC meeting. Uh, our PLC meeting, uh, the Professional Learning Committee, just as a reminder, this is the committee that plans our staff development days. So we looked at our next year's staff development days, um, we have two. We have, uh, the dates are November fifth, we pushed our couple of them back a little bit to kind of match the region, um, and then March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So we're already planning out twenty twenty-five, uh, what we've committed to do, uh, PLC, um, and by way of ILC, is to lean on our local staff, our own teachers and our own administrators, our own staff members to provide professional learning opportunities for their colleagues. It's been well received here, we've always had dozens of folks raise their hands and say, you know what, I'm gonna wanna teach my colleagues something. And that, that takes a lot of courage, so we're gonna lean on our staff heavily next year. Uh, we, we hear staff saying constantly they need more collaboration time, they need more curriculum articulation time, they need more curriculum coordination time, so we're gonna provide that time on our staff development days. And, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of the, the answers in the room. Homer Central School District is full of phenomenal staff members that do great things, and we gotta share that far and wide across the district, so that's our goal. Does anybody have any questions about ILC or PLC from June?
Do they need to pay to be a mentor? Is there?
Yep, yep, yep.
So is that an annual thing or is that just, are the mentors the mentors?
No, it's, it's, it's an annual application, you submit an application to me, I talk to the person, I talk to the principal, they make a good mentor. Uh, but because of our two-year plan, just to kind of dig a little deeper on that for you, um, we have veteran staff who are untenured, right? They've come to us, two decades of experience from the school, they are a mentor and they're a mentee at this point because we ran out of mentors because we hired so, so many new, new, new staff. So with our new tweak, we hope to alleviate such a high need for mentors. It's a great thing that she's a mentor and mentee, she's kind of a, she loves it, she loves both ends of it, um, so, but we wanna avoid that as well, we struggle to get mentors, we kind of ran out of them.
Questions for Jen?
Thanks, sir. Thank you, everybody.
Brings us to school and community items, uh, or member activities.
Uh, I had a chance to go into the last Homer Girls class and do job interviews for Subway. So, um, it was really cool and I went into it very casual, but I walked away realizing like how, like, these poor children had sweaty hands and like, it was legitimately like a really good first time. And that was Barb's point of hosting that was, so now you got your first interview over and we get to ask questions and do things. Um, there was some surprising information, one of the questions I asked kids, what would you do if you saw a coworker stealing? I was really surprised by their answer. Nobody said tournament. So I was like, wow, okay! But I didn't ask all the same questions to all the same kids, uh, so they were very different, but I walked away thinking that, that's a really great soft skill and it's something I hope that we push into somewhere in what we're keeping. Cause I, I did find value, and it also was a great reminder, like Barb, one of the questions was, do you have your working papers? And most of the children kind of picked it up yet, and I said, do you know where to get them? And they'd said, no, and Barb's like, I told them all where to get them. I'm sure she did, right? So it's that hearing something over and over that reaffirming and, um, you know, I think it's great and I, I think it's wonderful when kids are that motivated at that age to get a job. Cause there's limitations and you have to depend on your parents or other people to help you get a job and it's just.
And to get you back and forth to that job.
Yeah, it, it's refreshing to see that, like, there's genuine interest in it and helping them get through that jitters on it was a really cool experience, so I.
I attended the charter parade, um, which, uh, second year we done it. First off, thanks for allowing us to have one. And, uh, we didn't have as many participants as we did last year, but it was very well organized, um, and the reception at the school and the kids at the whole school was, was, was pretty, pretty great, you know, especially at the elementary school. Mr. Pascoe turned up in the dance music and the kids were nuts, so.
I'm gonna run my, my lawnmower in that next year. I could keep right up, I think.
I, I think you can. But it was, it was, it was good and hopefully next year, we're gonna, um, we're gonna, you know, continue to grow it. But I also attended the, uh, senior awards banquet last night, which was very well done, uh, I'm sure it was a great job.
How many awards were given out?
What we had done this year is moved, quite a few. Um, we had moved, you know, in years past, we've had an awards night where all the grades were there and it was fairly lengthy, so we broke it out by grade level. But, um, we still had the same number, it's just that no one was from the kids' corner. A lot of great kids honored, you know, it was nice.
Upcoming events?
Yes, there's not one in here that's not important. So we're here tonight, as you know, uh, our seniors, Janelle being one of those, will have mandatory graduation rehearsal at eleven o'clock on Friday. And we'll huddle as a group after that to determine, and, and Mr. Vinick told the folks this, last night at the senior banquet, that we'll do our best to get the best information as relates to weather and determine whether we're going to go inside or outside. We can comfortably, we, we graduated one hundred and thirty students this year, so we can comfortably fit, um, students in the gymnasium if need be. But last night at the awards, I was doing a little informal, uh, poll, asking people if, if you had a decision to make, you're gonna get a little spritzed with some rain or be inside, which would you want? And I didn't have anybody say they wanted to be inside, so we're gonna do our darnedest to get them, to get them outside. It'll take a lot of coordination, but Doug and, and his group, along with the buildings and grounds folks, um, have a good solid plan, so communicate what we're gonna do and then to carry it out. have a good solid plan, so communicate what we're going to do and then to carry it out on Saturday. So graduation at ten o'clock on Saturday. And then for the Board, we have our reorganizational meeting with the new members of the Board on the ninth, right here at H-Tech. And then a reminder that a week later, we'll have day one of our two-day retreat right here at H-Tech. And we'll get that agenda out to you so that you have all of that fine information. That's what I have, buddy.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I would look for a motion to move to Executive Session to discuss the employment of a particular person or persons. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and folks, I'm going to, we'll empty the room and we'll let you stay right here, okay?